Thanks for being here for the AIAA Town Hall Meeting on Governance and Open Access. I'm here to share an update on what's going on, and I have a couple of quick points to make up front. The first is, we're actually in the middle of a process that started three years ago. It started with a Blue Ribbon Panel that we brought in to take a look at how we're running the organization, how the board structured our overall governance model, and that resulted in a set of recommendations that came out in 2014. And based on that set of recommendations in 2014, we created a governance working group. And through the course of the governance working group, they helped us define what I would call a more simplified and streamlined and flexible and adaptable structure so that AIAA can adapt to the environment in front of us as we move forward. And that culminated in the adoption of a new constitution in May and the adoption of a new set of bylaws by the board in June. So now the next step in this process is the transition of the organization into this new governance model, and that's what I'm going to talk about a little bit today. But the point I want to make is between the Blue Ribbon Panel and the governance working group and the governance transition group, there have been a number of people who have put in literally thousands of hours. And you wouldn't think it'd be that complex, but this is an organization that's been around for a long time, it's evolved over time, and kind of restating, re-baselining the governance model requires a lot of work in terms of the detailed documentation, what's going on. So I really want to thank everyone who's worked on it and really appreciate the effort that they've put in. The next comment is just with all the sessions we're doing, whether you're here in Grapevine or watching on livestream, we are using the conference's IO site for questions during the Town Hall Meeting, and the URL is AIAA.cnf.io. There's info on the program. And our time is limited, but we'll take all the questions we get, and if we can't answer them here, we're going to post them onto the relevant portion of the website. So with that, I want to get into, this is really just a status update of what we're doing to start the transition to the new governance model. So these are the key objectives when we set out to do this. Restructure the board to make it more likely to be effective at creating and implementing a strategic vision. This is, the board had evolved over time to become a little bit more tactical oriented. We want to step back and make sure that the board is looking for the, to ensure the future of AIAA is focused on the strategy of the future and can help ensure that that's being implemented. Clear lines of authority and accountability. A mechanism for providing membership feedback to the board. And you'll see some structure about how we're doing that through something we call the Council of Directors, which is entirely membership-driven and membership-elected. Create an opportunity for membership-driven innovation and a mechanism to grow and leverage talent within the organization. So conceptually, conceptually, at a very high level, it shows it at the top, the Board of Trustees, and we called it Board of Trustees to distinguish it from the Council of Directors. So we have, we have one group of directors, another group of trustees, and the Board of Trustees is at the level setting the vision, developing the strategy, ensuring that the strategy can be executed, and making sure we're making progress against the strategy. The green side on the left, of course, is all membership-driven, up through the various committees and activity committees and the Council of Directors to provide feedback and interaction with the board. And then the blue side is about taking the board and flowing it out and making sure we have the mechanisms and the organization and the structure to execute that. What we're working on is basically what would be, how does the green box and the blue box kind of interface and interact with each other at what level to make sure that everything stays in sync such that when stuff comes up through the green into the board and down through the blue that it doesn't, you know, get lost and that there's a constant interaction? So we're working on that pretty hard. This next chart, I'm going to spend a little bit of time on because it looks really simple, but it's actually, there's a lot on it that's relatively complex. So first of all, you do see the Board of Trustees that I've talked about, and it's not only the vision and the strategy and the means to implement it, but the other, I would argue, and there was just some debate in the meeting I was in, but I think it's important is to get it to, one, a manageable size. We currently have over 30 members, which is a very large board, and many of the board members have responsibilities within the institute beyond just being a board member. And we really want to get people focused, if they're on the, if they're on the board, that that's really their sole position. And so what we're moving towards is one that will be nine members at large, which are, will be elected by the Council of Directors. And on top of that, there's the President, the Treasurer, and either the immediate past President or the President-elect. The way it's set up, in no given period would you have a simultaneous immediate past President and a President-elect. So that gives you the total number of the board. And we're working out, it's not finalized yet, but that the board would have a set of desired competencies. So that includes things like vision, business acumen, domestic and international aerospace knowledge and experience, experience in leadership, strategy, execution, and AIAA leadership and participation. And clearly, we can and will have board-directed committees to ensure the execution of our key strategies. An example now is the forums committee. You'll see a little bit later in the pitch, we'll have public policy publications and be able to stand up committees, either temporary or permanent, as the board sees fit to execute the strategy. Now, the Council of Directors, you see on the left in the greens, should look familiar. It's responsible for the technical excellence of the institute, and it consists of the member-elected directors in the Regional and Sections Activities Committee, the Technical Activities Committee, and a committee we're calling the Professional Activities Committee, although I can tell you, in the session I was in today, there's discussion of renaming that to the Aerospace Interest Committee, which I think there's some momentum around because I think we wanted to have aerospace in there. And the Regional and Sections Activity Committee is largely unchanged, it's geographic and will continue generally as is. In the Technical Activities Committee and the Technical Committees, we had some activities there that didn't really necessarily fit in there, but we had nowhere else to put them. And so creating this Aerospace Interest Committee is a place to put things that we think we want to have committees on or of interest to the membership and of interest to the institute, and create a home for them with their own set of directors and their own representation on the Council of Directors. So some of the, some of the, I already said that. So I want to give you some examples. So some of the committees that wouldn't fit in there, in the Professional Activities Committee, there was discussion about their committees focused on social activities, professional development activities, and maybe a systems integration activity that crosses a lot of our technical committees, but we don't have a mechanism to look at integrating across all of those and is looking at a bigger picture. And right now, we're looking at committees such as young professionals, program management, some of the more systems integration, and also, we really never had a home for the corporate membership committee, and we believe that's where that's going to end up. Then the other thing that you see on there down at the bottom is something called Communities of Interest. And what's really interesting about that is it's member-identified interests, and the intent is to allow members to quickly organize around topics of interest without having to go through the process of actually forming a committee. So as, as we see communities of interest around, around the aerospace activities, we can allow these people to self-organize and find a manner to support them in some way, and that's what we're trying to work out, what level of support and how we support them, but allow them to get established quickly and allow them to build a constituency and see, you know, whether there's a lot of interest, whether it starts catching on, and there's a potential for, you know, they get together, it's self-administered, sort of ad hoc, but the way it works is, as they organize and decide how much traction they get or how much interest they get, they could actually become organized into an actual committee of some sort within either the technical or the aerospace interest. On the other hand, it may just be a smaller group that continues to do their efforts with a little bit of sponsorship from AIA, or maybe something that comes and goes after a little while. But the idea is to create the flexibility to quickly create these things and see if they develop into something without having to formally create a committee. Okay, so then you get to the question of, how do we get to a board with the right people and the competencies? So you see up there on the upper left, there's something called the Executive Nominating Committee, and they're going to present nominations for officers and members at large. So there's six members selected by the board that go into the executive nominating committee with, are no current board members, six members appointed by the Council of Directors, which will be no Council of Directors members, and the chair will be the immediate past President. And so the way it works then is the Board of Trustees will be elected by the Council of Directors. The membership will elect the President-elect, who then will become the President and the past President, and the Treasurer is selected by the current board members. And then within the board, the executive director is the secretary. You also see something called the Council of Directors Nominating Committee. The Chair of that council is, the Chair of the Council Nominating Committee is elected by the council, and the idea of the nominating committee is to ensure a good qualified slate of candidate, candidates for the Chairs of ARSA, TAC, and PAC. So as you can see, there's, it's the elements of a member-driven but strategic organization that has the ability and flexibility to be innovative and adapt with the right talent leading and guiding the organization. So that's kind of where we're going. There's a lot of work to be done to make sure, first of all, that we're all aligned on exactly how we're going to execute all this and have the policies and procedures in place. So in the transition plan, what we have are the guiding principles for the transition, which is, one, right, cause the least amount of disruption. We have to keep the wheels on and keep operating. The worst thing you can do during change and change management is break what you're currently doing without having something in place. It'd be like replacing your healthcare system without having any backup plan, for instance. And provide the fastest possible path for the transition. So the next chart is funny because when I was going through these charts, I read this, the fastest possible path for the transition, and then I put up a chart that shows that it takes till 2020. And obviously, we want to go as fast as we can, and a lot of the stuff will be in place, certainly this year, but as it turns out, we have an existing board, which is the very large board. Some people, as a result, in May will shift off, and I'll show a chart on that, either to board-directed committees or Council of Directors, but we still have a board, we have to transition into the new model. And as we look at how we have to bring new board members on board, it really will be in around the 2020 timeframe before all of the terms shake out and we get to a stable model of what we really want to get to. So getting the transition activity in place, I believe will get largely completed this year, but the, but transitioning to the vision of the board, Council of Directors, it's going to take a little bit of a while as terms go. So here we, we talk about, it begins with the 2017 election cycle. The current board members, and I don't know if you guys heard something about this, but this gets to the idea that we want one person to have one job within AIA. And so the current board members were given a choice to either complete their term on the board as a member at large, or where applicable, resign the board and go either to the Council of Directors or go to a board-directed committee. And those, those choices become effective in May of this year, it's the board year. And so then we have to fill any vacant Council of Director roles or Board of Trustee at large, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of details involved as we start this transition. And we had a, we had a four-hour offsite today on that, and we're getting back together to continue to work that, to make sure we're aligned on where we're headed. So to the board-directed committees, we want to start where we have, and, thank you, start where we have. And we're, and subtracting is we need to achieve our goals. The initial leadership for any of these committees will be up by appointment as required until we get into the full way that we're operating. So this, this chart, basically what it just shows is how current board members are translating either into the Council of Directors or into board-directed, Chairs of board-directed committees. So you see things like the Vice President of Education is now the Chair of the Educational Activities, which is a board-directed committee. Vice President of Finance becomes the Treasurer. The Vice President of Member Services is now the Chair of the ARSA for the Council of Directors, and you can go through their publications, public policy, standards, all become board, the people become Board, Chair of Board-Directed Committees, Vice President Technical is Chair of the TAC, and so on. So it's a pretty straightforward transition, at least at that level. So we started the Governance Transition Working Group, and as I said, we've been working really the next level of detail needed in terms of making sure our policies and procedures are written and reflect the way we want to run the organization going forward. And we had the offsite today, and we're working on decisions we have to make or, or issues we have as we look through the details and start fleshing it out. So you can see, we established four sub-teams. One is, the Team One is the organizational element of the Council of Directors about their structure, the operations, and how to create, how are they created, staffed to become a member? That's really relatively straightforward compared to what we're doing now, but just making sure that's working right. Communications and integration teams, we're talking about standing committees, which are more permanent committees versus special committees, structure, operations, roles, and how the committees will be chartered and the expectations of these committees. Open action items is the executive nominating committee that I went over, fleshing out exactly how that's going to work and the timeline around how that will work, and also communication links between the Council of Directors and the Board of Trustees. So it's member-driven. We want the Council of Directors, which is member-driven, to be able to interact with the board. We want to be sure we're clear that we have regular interaction, how that interaction occurs, and make sure we all understand that. And then the roles and responsibilities for the Boards of Trustees. So generally, I think that pretty much sums it up. So I think at this point, we can go ahead and take any questions. I told Sandy before the session that I was going to say everything I knew about this topic during my speaking portion, but there's been a lot of details going into it, and there's a lot of complexity, but we'll be happy to address any questions you have.
So we do have some questions. I think the first one, the one that, there's a lot of students in the room, so I know why this is the most popular question. From the point of view of AIA leadership, what are the responsibilities of students and young professionals in support of future governance? So you have some ideas?
Yeah, I think, well, the, the young professionals are going to end up into the Aerospace Interest Committee, and so they'll have representation up through that chain into the Council of Directors because, yeah, the young professionals will have a director at their level that sums up the committee level, and then will be part of the Council of Directors.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting. We had a couple committees that were sort of orphans in our old structure. Corporate Member Committee had no way to interface to the board through a director. You know, normally, our committees go up through groups, and there's directors, or regions, and there's directors. And our Young Professional Committee was also sort of orphaned. It was sort of off in a, in a side spot with no direct representation up through the structure, so they'll get that now. And I think the other thing I'd like to mention is, for students and young professionals, you're the leaders of the future, and we need you to stay engaged, and we need you to, to take on leadership roles and ask for leadership roles and start, start building that because you're our future Council of Directors people, you're our future Board of Trustee people. And take advantage of what AIA has to offer you from the viewpoint of leadership experiences because not only will that help the organization as you become our future leaders, but that helps you in your day jobs. And you can say, hey, you know, it's really hard to manage volunteers. So if you can manage volunteers, you can manage anybody, trust me. It's really, so, so for the students and young professionals, find ways to get engaged. One of the goals of this governance change was to provide more opportunities, leadership opportunities. Speaking out of return a little bit, I would like to see us create a board-directed committee that's talent and leadership development-focused so that we have a more proactive and mindful way of building our leadership talent inside AIA because right now, there's a lot of, oh, I know a guy and I know a gal, and, you know, and that's, that's great, but there's a lot of talent in our community, I think, that goes untapped just because you may not be tapped into the network the way that, that's ideal. So if we can create a mindful way to do this, we'll be that much more powerful. So for the students and the young professionals, find ways to volunteer for, you know, start small, you know, take a task on, and then take a bigger task on, and then maybe take a technical chair or deputy technical chair, or be a section lead, or just find ways to develop your leadership skills, and that will be the thing that, that benefits you and benefits us both simultaneously.
Yeah, and what I, what I would add to that is, we create board-directed committees, but one of the things we're going to be focused on is making sure that there's diversity of background, thought, and experience, right? So, so young professionals certainly going to have a different set of experiences and thoughts, and we want to make sure we get a good cross-section so that we have strong committees exploring the boundaries of options and possibilities with as much experience as possible.
Absolutely. What is the current thinking about how our standing committees, for example, public policy, international, young member, young professionals, et cetera, will be distributed between the Council of Directors and the Board of Trustees? So I think you alluded to a bunch of that in your slides.
Right. Yeah, maybe they asked that question before I got to the slides.
Yeah, I think, that was actually, that question was in there when you started. So someone was very curious about that.
Oh, was it?
So if you recall the slides, you know, public policy is a very strategic thing. International, there's actually a group working on what an international strategy for AIA might look like, and that could be a formation of some board-directed committees. Right now, I believe international, although we didn't talk about it today, will probably end up in the Aerospace Interest Committee as its current function until we figure out what a good international strategy is, and then I would anticipate that whatever that looks like would get populated in whatever area is appropriate. But one could argue that working internationally is an important part of our organization, and so how we figure out where that fits has a lot to do with how we choose to engage. There's also some, been to some discussion, rather informally to this point, about why do we have six regions in the U.S. and then one international region that covers everybody else that's not U.S. as opposed to trying to break that down and meet the needs of people in, at least on a continent basis? So there's a lot of ideas going on, going on there. Standards will end up, I think, from your slides, we had that in the board-directed side.
Board-directed.
You know, think about things that we're doing strategically, and that's kind of a guide. What are the, let's see. How does the Council of Directors supply and influence the executive nomination process? And I'll come back to the white pea question in a minute, so.
Well, the, the Council of Directors has six members on the, is that about the executive nominating committee?
Executive nominating.
Yeah, there's six, there's six members in the exec, let's see, six members on the executive nominating committee that are put there by the Council of Directors, is how I'd characterize it, right? They are not members of the Council, but they supply six of the members. And then the board puts six members on the executive nominating committee.
So there's a balance of interests on the executive nominating committee. And one of the key things that we talked about when we were going through the governance working group and talking with the board in the two-year process to leading to the constitution change was the fact that you don't want people on the nominating committee who are current members of the board or the council, and that's not something that was in our old bylaws. And so by having the council appoint six people who are not currently leader, elected leaders, the board appointing six people who are not currently serving, you've got equal balance from both communities about how the executive nomination process goes, and there's no conflict of interest because nobody's currently serving. And oh, by the way, there's term limits, term limits now for the executive nominating process. You can be on the committee for three years, and then you have to take a break, and you can come back later because, you know, 10 years from now, you might want to come back. But in our, in our old system, for those of you who recall, basically, there was no term limits, and you could have the same people coming up on the nominating committee year after year after year, and that's not healthy. So there was a lot of checks and balances put into the executive nominating committee. And one comment I'd also like to make is, the executive nominating committee is going to be looking for people to fill the competencies that are needed for the board, whether, hey, we need, we need a small business competency, or we need international competency, we need a young professional competency, you know, pick your, pick your poison. Those competencies, those needed competencies are going to be a discussion between the council and the board, and they'll agree on what the competencies are that are needed that year, and they'll direct jointly the executive nominating committee, hey, go look for these kinds of people. And then the executive nominating committee will put a call out to the members, hey, we need these kinds of people, make some nominations, but they will also be charged with going to recruit candidates as well. And the selection process has a lot more rigor to it than it did before where there's an actual interview with the candidates, and they have to fill out a few forms and self-evaluations to prove why they're filling the competencies and meeting the needs and can think strategically and do the things that the board needs them to do. So there's a lot more rigor put into that executive nominating process, both in a, in a structure and in the process and procedures, to try and make sure that, A, there's a balance between the member-driven and the strategic side, as well as some, you know, just attention to the kind of people that are getting on the board and they're meeting the needs of the institute.
So that, the idea, of course, is that we have a qualified slate, and then the Council of Directors gets to review that, and then they will choose from that slate.
I'm going to go down to this question that just came in because I think this is really key, a key concern for people. Can you elaborate more on what you mean by member-driven? What does that realistically mean?
Well, I think the way I'd characterize it is, I mean, we are a membership society, a professional technical society, and the majority of the people in the organization are on the, you know, the green side of the chart is how I'd characterize it. So we want to be sure we understand the needs of the organization and that there's a mechanism to not only understand and serve those needs and that that information gets to the board, and that we can make sure our strategies are aligned around with that, but also that, that we're satisfying what people's expectations are when they have a membership here, so that we have clear communication and there's flow up and then flow down of actual activities that satisfy what people are looking for out of the membership in AIA.
Yeah, and to be, and to add on to that, you know, in the strategic planning process, we're going to be building a mechanism for, for, you know, people who have ideas of things they want to do to flow up through the member side, get to the board, and the board evaluates, yeah, that does, that is something strategically AIA should be doing. For example, if an idea comes up, hey, I want to go buy an elephant, okay, that's not what we should be doing, right? But if there's ideas for activities or workshops or area of interest or whatever, that needs to flow up, and the board needs to get that information, hey, our members think this is important, and this is something we should be doing, and you need to take that in account in the strategic plan, and then that can flow down. So that, that's the dynamic that Jim is mentioning.
Yeah, and I would argue with the Council of Directors, I would, I would hope they wouldn't bring forward buy an elephant to the, to the board.
You never know, trust me. Yeah, rhino instead. But the, the point is, in the formulation of this new governance structure, there was a lot of worry that there was going to be a board that's up here thinking strategically, totally disconnected from the rest of the community, and they were just going to kind of go la, 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 off into right field and not pay attention to what was going on in our very vital, passionate, you know, member-driven activity side. And so if you look really closely at this governance structure, there's a lot of checks and balances to make sure that those two, those institutions are communicating clearly, and that's really the goal there. I don't, I'm going to throw this question out, but I'm not entirely sure I have the answer to it. Why are people under 35 not considered as regular members for TCS? So is there anybody here from TAC who can address that?
I'm the TC Chair.
Yeah, go ahead. Here, you can borrow my, I don't, because I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. That brings me, and, here.
Steve will answer this. We have a guest speaker.
Hi, I'm Steve Justice. I'm chairman of the Society in Aerospace Technology, TC. Young members are considered full members of the TCS. What we did many years ago, we had a 35-member limit on membership of TCS, and sometimes what that meant is we had 35 very seasoned folks in the TC, and there are no slots left for young members. So we expanded that to say we could, TCS could take on more than 35 members if those members were young members. were young members.
There you go.
Maybe? Ah, there you go. So if you're under 35 and you're on a TC, you are a full member, you're a voting member. It was a mechanism just put in place, again, to make it easier for TCS to bring young people onto the TC without kicking off somebody that'd already been around for 10, 15 years or something like that. So it was just a way to encourage more young people to be involved in TCS. But if you're on it, you're a full member, you're a real member. It was just a mechanism to make it easier.
It's us working around rules that we can probably change if we want to, is really what it's all about. And that brings us to communities of interest. So I think we should talk about the purpose of communities of interest and some of the advantages of having such a mechanism. There's a question here about someone who wants to create a community of interest for complex system sustainment, what are your steps? So let's start with a general concept about communities of interest, and then we'll go from there, so.
I think I went through.
Okay, let me elaborate. So the idea of communities of interest is that members can form more easily communities around interests that they have. And one could argue, and this came up in our retreat this morning, or this afternoon, actually, it's kind of a blur, that if there is a community of interest, and I always use thermophysics as an example, because that's just sort of where I came from a little bit, and it's like, hey, I really like this particular part of thermophysics, this is really interesting, and people start forming around that, they can connect to the TC and become like a farm club, I think was the terminology that was used in the retreat, where you've got people who are generally interested in the area, they don't have time to serve full-time on the committee, or they don't necessarily have all the skill sets the committee needs, but they're still, they still have that connection. And that allows us to engage more members in topics that we already have, as well as allow members to create topics that are newer, until there's a synergy that maybe a community of interest grows into a new committee, because there's that much interest in it, and there's activities that they think they want to be doing. We haven't had a way to do that before. And it also gets us, you know, thinking a little bit more about, you know, is 35 the right number? If you have this community of interest around the 35 people, could you do much more? Do you have more leadership opportunities? Do you have more ability to do things? And as far as the steps going, we're still defining the steps that you need to form a community of interest. Key to this capability is going to be a community platform, which there are some focus groups going on this week with our new IT director, Rich, to identify how we can help. You know, you see communities of interest formed in LinkedIn. We have a few out there, but how can we form them inside the AIAA umbrella such that they are available to, avail themselves of the resources of AIAA? So stay tuned for the how to do it, because it's still a work in progress.
But I think a key part of that is enabling people who want to be active in AIAA to have a mechanism to become more active. I think we have a number of people who want to participate in some way and really haven't quite found how, and this is a way to make it relatively easy for that. We want to encourage that.
Yeah, and the other thing that I've run into in my running around is just communicating to students and young professionals the opportunities that they have to engage. So we have to do a little bit better in our communication as well. What are the leadership opportunities that are being created by the new governance structure for the YPs that you mentioned? Really, everything that we just talked about. I think there's going to be more committees, there's going to be these communities of interest, there's going to be possibilities with these competencies on the board. So it's really a broader set, and hopefully, we'll have the system set up where there'll be more movement. So you won't get somebody who's, you know, 10 years a chair, because there's opportunities for other people to come in and be behind them, serving on the nominating committees, serving on some of the standing committees. So there's a lot out there, and we'll keep communicating that as it's delivered. So I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and throw this one out there, although it's not a governance thing, but there are people who want to ask it. Compared to other technical conferences, AIAA rates are much higher for both professionals and students. What is leadership doing to adjust conference costs to increase participation? I'll take this one.
Thanks.
So actually, our conference costs are about average for technical conferences. We really keep an eye on that, and our conference costs are driven, of course, by location. And that varies, you know, the price of, by the way, we get charged a huge amount of money for coffee, but let's not go there. I don't drink coffee. Between, you know, the difference between DC and San Diego and Dallas, so there's location costs. And let me just talk about the financial model of AIAA for a minute, because I'm not sure how many people are aware of this. All the things that AIAA does in general are paid for by three income streams. Publications, which is about 40%, conferences, which is about 30%, and membership. And that includes individual membership and corporate membership, which is about 30%. And so we have our conference costs, we make them as cheap as we can with the direct costs, and there is a little bit added on to help pay for the other things that AIAA does. And we're very, very sensitive to that. If you, I don't know if you've paid attention, but we have not raised the conference rates for the last two or three years, because we've been able to keep the costs down. And so we work this really hard. And it's not a number that's set arbitrarily, it's not something that we're trying to squeeze the community with. We're trying to make sure that we're keeping the rates in the middle of the range, and that we can balance what the costs are with all the other demands that are happening in AIAA as well. So it's not just a simple, you know, one conference fits all thing. And there's definitely a very complex equation that goes in there when we consider how the conference structure works. And I'm happy to have a conversation with anybody offline to go into the details, but that's some of the things that go behind the cost of the conferences. Is there a way, the first question, Pam, I'd answer, so you can read that. Is there a way to open the strategic discussions held by the board of directors to the members so they can, so they can follow how the organization is being steered?
Well, we're definitely in the phase where we're working on a new strategic plan. So certainly, once we develop that strategic, the new strategic plan for the next three years, the strategic plan that we put was a three-year plan that '17 is kind of the crossover to creating a new strategic plan. So we're actually starting our initial set of offsites to develop with the new governance model, and making sure we're relevant going forward, is a very specific, objective-oriented strategic plan. And we're just starting that effort. So I can definitely commit that we will communicate, as we will communicate our strategies and our strategic objectives when we get aligned around them. And then there, I'm sure there will be an opportunity for interaction, question, that sort of thing, because in my mind, strategic plans aren't cast in stone, and if there are other ideas and the board aligns around them, we can adjust it.
And at the current moment, the best thing to do is to find your elected representative and ask, and have them be the conduit, because they're, and also, any member of the sub-teams, and we'll have all this out on the governance website, you guys should be very familiar with that from last year. But your directors, your elected representatives are all engaged in this process, and there's a broader group of people now engaged on these sub-teams. And so those are your conduits into feeding input in or listening to what's going on. And again, we'll continue to put things out there on the website as they go back, but we're very much in sausage-making stage right now, because we've got, you know, the constitution and the bylaws, that's very, those are a very high level. And these governance transition sub-teams that Jim mentioned earlier are all now in the policy and procedure stage, and that's kind of where we are.
And that's right, the strategic planning process is not being done in isolation. The council of directors will be involved.
Yep.
And it will, this is part of the member-driven, they will go out and work with the committees, get input, feedback, flow it back up, and we're going to integrate all of that into what we think is a cohesive set of strategic objectives.
And just to follow on to that, we're working with our facilitator, Michael Galory, who's going to help the board and the council understand their roles in the strategic planning process and how those communications are going to flow during the process. So I think there's a lot of opportunities for input, stay in touch with the elected representatives, and pay attention to what's going on on the governance website. And as you notice, we've been doing a lot of corner offices, either from Jim or myself, and I think this all-hands is very handy once a year to get out here at SciTech during this process as well. Okay, keep going. We have probably one more, one more question, and then you and I have to go, and you guys are going to hear about public access, which is very important for anybody who publishes. Last question. Still looks like a lot of stovepipe activity. Please explain how the member and board-driven groups will be incentivized to talk. Good question. And that's a mechanism that one of the sub-teams is working on, and I don't know if we have all the answers to that yet. I think the idea being the institute, and this is where we struggle, you know, for example, the institute says, hey, you know what? UAVs are an important thing for aerospace, and we've got to do something as an organization on UAVs. So how do, and we're still struggling with this from a staff side, how do we get the people across the AIAA community who are interested in UAVs to go, hey, over here is an activity that you should be engaging in, because this is important to the institute strategically, and this is also your personal interest? That's really, that's really the tricky part, and I don't know if we've solved that even in our current structure, and we're going to have to keep figuring out how to do that, because I think a lot of it is communication and finding the people who have the passion for certain subjects, and then matching them up to the activities that are going on in those subjects. And some of that's happening, you know, in like in a technology, like the computation of fluid dynamics, people, they all know each other in this little group, but what if the CFD guys needed to be working on, you know, some rocket problem or some hypersonic problem over here? You know, that cross-talk between our communities is still very challenging. So if you guys have ideas on how to help that get better, I'm all ears. Send me emails, and I'll make sure it gets to the right sub-teams to work on, because that's tricky. And that's something we've not done very well as an organization, and we need to do better. So with that, I have to take him to the associate fellows photo thing, so I'm going to abscond with Jim. There are other questions in here, and we're going to get the answers out on the governance website. And if you have other questions, send them in, and we'll put them out on the governance website.[1780.58][1780.58]